Everyone. Today is our February fifteenth meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody to our pre-meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now in the hands of our capable city clerk, Ms. Lisa Lambert.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, February fifteenth. We have approval of minutes from February the eighth.
No problem.
We have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance on July sixteenth, eight AM to six PM in Tricentennial Park.
No problem.
March nineteenth, from twelve PM until ten thirty PM on Marine Street. Okay, July thirtieth, thirty first, from nine AM until ten PM. This is in Cooper Riverside Park.
Uh, the ten eight, ten PM is okay to Cooper Riverside Park.
Okay, June seventeenth, from six PM until two eight AM on, uh, Lusier Road. District four.
Oh, no problem.
April sixteenth, from eight AM until, um, eight PM in Medal of Honor Park.
No issues.
March fifth through the sixth, from nine AM until ten PM in Medal of Honor Park.
No issues.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to consider the application of Ruby Smith Business as S U R E Transportation LLC to operate a shuttle service. Public hearing to rezone property located at fourteen fifty-two Government Street from R three to B one. Public hearing to rezone property located at forty-two fifty-one Bittensboro Road from R one to R two.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Dave.
As you know, I, I contacted, uh, President Small over the weekend and mentioned that, that I have been asked to testify before the Surface Transportation Board this morning. I don't know exactly when that's gonna happen, uh, but it could happen during the time of the city council meeting, and, um, I've asked that this matter, if, if I'm not here when this matter's called, that, and we'll know more as we get closer to ten thirty, uh, that, that if that, if this, uh, public hearing could be moved around on the agenda either before or later, depending on what time I'm gonna have to step out for about fifteen or twenty minutes to testify.
If it's the will of the council, if we can move this up before the appeals, or Mr. Dave's, and, and actually put that one on top of the appeals if possible. I do know that our mayor also had the same type of communication on this morning also, so he may have to, uh, step out also. I'd like to, if this is the will of the council, we can move these public hearings up.
No objections.
That's fine.
None, and, and just to note, Mr. President, this, this one did get quite a bit of, um, action under planning commission. A lot of folks showed up on both sides of this, so I would expect to see some action on this one here this morning.
Do you want to, um, move this up to the first one in appeals, or?
Well, I, I just don't, right now, I don't know exactly when I'm gonna, they don't give you a specific time. There's a time when the meeting starts, and then, you know, you have ten or twelve people in front of you, and depending on how long they take, you know, so I don't, I don't know exactly when I'll be called out, so I'm hesitant to say move it to the front, or.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and move it, after we adopt the agenda, we can go ahead and have a public hearings, and that could be the first one that's called out.
Okay, so I'll, um, we adopt the agenda, and then we'll do public hearings, and then we'll do appeal.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
But, but, Mr. President, I don't know, see, I don't know, I might be, I might be called at ten thirty.
And then so we just, we'll play it by ear.
Play it by ear, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Public hearing to declare the structures at ten fifty-seven State Street, fourteen eighty-one John H. Campbell Senior Way, two twelve Norman Street, eleven ten Gammon Circle West. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Public hearing to consider assenting to the vacation of portions of Pearl, Lyons Hospital and Basil Streets. Public hearing to consider a right-of-way fee for the vacation of portions of Pearls, Street, Lyons Street, Hospital Street and Basil Street.
Ms. Carol, you, you have anything on it? You heard from anybody? Yeah.
On the issue of the vacation of property around Bishop State, I've talked to President Bern, Brandenburg, uh, I've talked to, uh, despite everyone over there, the board of directors, I've also talked to a few mi- members in the community. Uh, the only drawback that I've had from the community, they were worried about, uh, funeral processions from, uh, the Lily, I mean, from Lily Baptist, I'm sorry, I still say the Lily, uh, from Lily Baptist, but, uh, I think that they'll, the gates will be open during the hours of funeral hours, and that may be an easy, easy way in and out to go through there, uh, don't know about if it'll be open on the weekends, but that's the only thing that I've heard, everything else has been, uh, uh, pretty positive, uh, the fencing and other things that are gonna go up around the community is all about the safety of the school and the kids that are there, so I have no problem with it, that's just, uh.
Alright, thank you. Um, Mr. Arden.
They're requesting a waiver of the right-of-way fee as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't have a problem with that either. I mean, they're state institutions, state school, college, uh, those, that type of approach is normally given, uh, to universities and colleges in our area. Uh, we know that other entities have gone through the same process, so it'd be just as equally fair as to allow Bishop State to have the same, uh, revenue.
What is that fee normally?
Well, it's based on, uh, I think it's based on square footage, square footage of the area of, that's cut off, so it could be, it could be ten dollars, or it could be a million dollars, based on how much the area is.
I was asking administration.
It, it's one hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Yeah. You all probably got an email from the attorney working on this. Um, I know I did, I just figured he probably reached out to everybody.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Dave.
It, it, this, uh, it's been our practice over the last, uh, several years, seven, eight years, that we've been collecting this fee to waive it, uh, for public entities, uh, and so I'm in favor of waiving it in this instance.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, and that's, when I spoke to the attorney, I, and he explained everything, um, I didn't have a, a problem with it either. It's their practice.
Alright, final clerk.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, uh, Bridget Goode regarding redistricting, Reverend Tony Allgood regarding homelessness, Reverend Jim Flowers homelessness, and Dr. Crystal Lockett Wilson, I would like to introduce herself and provide information about her organization.
What organization is that?
Um, it's called, uh, the Pure Vine Foundation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
Um, while we are here this morning, would be, would it be possible for Ms. Henderson to just give us a, a quick update on some of the meetings that she's had regarding homelessness? Cause we've got a committee meeting coming up on March second, and I know she's been really busy reaching out to a lot of the organizations.
Yes, ma'am, so what we have done is we've set up, um, meetings with about twenty-eight, um, organizations that serve people experiencing homelessness. Um, we've collected data on the number of persons, of course, the point-in-time count that happened, uh, early, late January, early February, those numbers aren't in, but, um, we have found that there is a gap in the number of what HUD deems as homeless versus children in homelessness, so, for instance, there are about six to eight hundred people currently on the waiting list, um, for homeless services, and then there are about thirty-five hundred young people in Mobile County Public School System who are deemed homeless, and so the gaps in services are, uh, affordable housing, that is the biggest issue. These homeless-serving organizations are doing the rapid rehousing where they're putting people into, um, hotels, but what we have right now is there are people who are, we'll say, um, working citizens, who are now using the, the low-income housing that our homeless-serving organizations used to use for vouchers, so it is not that the, the people who are living in these camps are not receiving the services, uh, what is happening is they are being, uh, blocked out of affordable housing, so we have that report to give to you, we're working with, um, your assistants to make sure that you can see the report and that we can go through it and answer any questions between now and next week, um, and then we'll be happy to give that report to you, um, in depth during your committee meeting. But that, that is the biggest issue, is, um, the lack of affordable homes.
Do you have that, that you can send to us electronically ahead of time?
Yes, yes.
So the, the meeting on, sorry, Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Gregory, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Reynolds.
So the meeting on March second, it's about camping and the improper use of public property, so in that meeting, are we saying we're gonna tack, try to tackle the whole broad issue of homelessness of, of folks that are not just on the camping, but also just homelessness as, as a whole, is that what we're doing on March second?
No, I don't believe that is the intent of the meeting, uh, however, we did want to be briefed on, uh, any, what we had heard about were gaps in services and that kind of thing, as we were talking about the issue of the, um, ordinance that you have brought to us, so that will just be part of the conversation so that we know where we are and what the, what the gaps may be, um, but this meeting primarily is to continue discussing what your, uh, ordinance is going forward. Um, I don't believe one committee meeting is going to solve all the issues, but it does provide information that we needed.
Uh, I would ask that, um, the, the subject matter of the March second Public Safety Committee meeting, you know, we, we could get into a whole lot of discussion about folks that are, you know, not living, not camping on the right-of-way, you know, and I, I wanna try to resolve the immediate concerns that are affecting them, you know, I think that's what the ordinance is aimed at, is that segment of the, uh, population that finds themselves camping on the right-of-way, um, so I think that's, that's providing the, the immediate public safety and public health concern for our city, uh, so I, I just didn't want it to get into this huge, uh, you know, discussion trying to resolve all folks that are, you know, on the verge of homeless and all that, although that, we should have that discussion, I would just ask that maybe we reserve some of those discussions for a, a later time, that we can address the immediate public health and safety concern of folks camping on the right-of-way.
Right, because your ordinance comes back up on the eighth, I believe.
Right, yeah.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll keep that in mind, because I don't think anybody in this, on this council believes that one committee meeting is going to solve the issues that Ms. Henderson has brought to our attention, but we're appreciative that she has brought this to our attention and that she has reached out and done work with these groups, because when we had people come down and speak to us, there were a lot of questions, a lot of discussion, and we at least needed to begin addressing some of that, but your ordinance, yes, we can try to keep that as separate as possible, because it does come back up, and we'll have to vote on it on March eighth.
No other questions or comments? Ms. Lambert.
Resolutions held over. Twenty-one, one, three, eight, authorized contract amendment with Southern Earth Sciences for annual landfill sampling requirements for Bates, C and D Landfield and Hickory Street Landfield. Zero eight, one thirty-nine, approved purchase order, postmark for annual business license renewal, print and mailing. Zero eight, one forty, approved purchase order to S H I International for one-year security awareness training. Zero eight, one forty-one, approved purchase order to Tech Vendor for annual renewal of recognition software, uh, M P D Cyber Division. Zero eight, one forty-two, approved purchase order to Pro Tech Video for annual software and storage license. Zero eight, one forty-three, approved item-based bid for printing of banners, posters, postcards. Zero eight, one forty-four, approved item-based bid for printing of corrugated plastic sheet signs. Twenty-one, one forty-five, authorized contract with Danielle Baca as cyber specialist. Uh, this is, uh, part of the A R P. Twenty-one, one forty-six, authorized contract with, uh, Joshua Jones as Youth Violence Prevention Coordinator, and this is also part of the A R P.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Hey, and, and I know we've had issues with, this is the second guy now that, that has come in, are, are we set with this one, is he ready to be hired, no issues?
There was no issues with the last guy, he just backed out at the last minute, so.
Right.
You, you, you never know, in, in, until it's time for to sign the contract, but we believe that, uh, Mr. Jones is prepared to come to work.
Thank you.
Thirty-one, one forty-seven, authorized grant agreement with the State of Alabama Department of Transportation to accept and receive monies from the Transportation Alternatives Program for implementation of the Mobile Greenway Initiative. Sixty, one forty-eight, request the Mobile County Legislative Delegation to propose legislation to grant the City of Mobile authority to pass an ordinance to enforce traffic violations through the use of photographic evidence and issuance of civil fines.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, so on this one, I think this one's really premature to be asking for, or to urge the legislative delegation to take some, or give us the authority to take some action to resolve an issue that I think there may be another resolution to this issue, but I don't think that we know fully also if, um, this issue, I think, I think we're trying to resolve with this, a, uh, collisions or accidents at our intersection, and there may already be other solutions out there, and we're, we're spending money at a pretty high rate to, to improve our signals throughout our city right now, and that alone may resolve a lot of these issues with folks running lights and that sort of thing. Um, you know, I've got questions about, you know, how these, um, intersections have been engineered, are they engineered appropriately to accommodate folks in the most appropriate way to make them safe? Are the yellow light times adequate at all of our intersections across our city? I mean, these, those questions are, I think, left unanswered at this point for me, and I, so I think this council's acting a little prematurely to try to, um, you know, use a sledgehammer to resolve an issue when we're spending millions of dollars to try to resolve it already, so, um, so I've got, I've got quite a few questions, and I would ask that, you know, we table this one until a, a later date, until we get some answers on some of this stuff.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
All we're, all this does is ask the legislative delegation to bring to the legislature a, uh, a, a bill that would allow us to do this in the future, should we choose to do so. Should we choose to do so? Even if the legislature passes this requested, or, uh, this requested act, we would still have the opportunity to implement it or not implement it, decide how we're gonna implement it, answer all of Mr. Reynolds' questions before it was implemented. All we're doing is asking the legislature to give us the authority to do it in the future.
Mr. President. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, do, the, the suggestion that this is premature, I would, I would counter that and say this is really late already, and this morning on the way to work, I watched a pickup truck run through a red light after it'd been red four or five seconds, almost hit a sedan, at another red light, same issue, except this time it was a semi-truck, full speed going through an intersection four or five seconds after the light was red, uh, almost hit a sedan, so we have a problem, and, and we need to address this problem now, not later, we don't need to kick it down the road, and, and I would ask that we don't table this, that we bring it to a vote and try and get this moving forward, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
Um, I agree with councilmembers Jones and, um, Dave's on this, it, it's not premature to ask the legislature to give us the authority to pass this, remember, the legislature only meets once a year, so to ask them to give us the authority to do something is not saying we are passing an ordinance with specific guidelines on where the cameras may go, it gives us time to begin working on answering Ben's questions about timing, anything like that, but we already know that we have a list of the most deadly intersections in the city, that's something that we've known for a very long time, we know where a lot of these problems already exist. The timing issue, we are working on, yes, but just to ask the legislature for the authority is just a first step, then we come back and look at exactly where they need to be, uh, what the timing issues may or may not be, so I'm like Scott and, and Joel, I think we need to go ahead and take a look at this and vote for this, just to give us the authority to begin doing some work on it.
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, we're not asking the legislature, first off, we're urging the legislature, we're, we're pushing the legislature to say, uh, we need this, take action on it, so essentially a vote today in favor is a vote today in favor of some sort of issuing or implementation of photo cameras, and, uh, if, if you want a private business to administer the law in your city, then vote in favor of this. They're the ones that are gonna be hired, they're gonna issue the ticket, the citations in a quasi-civil form, and I'm not in favor of that. If, if you're, if you're in favor of giving up the rights of our citizens to private companies, then vote in favor of them, that's what this is, an initial vote in favor of, so if, I, I know for a fact that I'm not in favor of them in any of its form, so I cannot cast my vote to allow the process to even get kicked off and started and forego the rights of our citizens at the state level, that's essentially what we're doing, we're saying we're gonna forego our citizens' rights at the state level by urging our delegation to give us an opportunity to figure out a way to take away their rights and penalize them by way of a private business.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn and Mr. Dave.
Um, I truly understand, um, Councilman Reynolds' concerns, um, when it was brought up on la- last week, um, I mentioned the same, some of the concerns that I think is some things that we could do, but we're not voting to implement this, um, type of ordinance today, it's just giving us the opportunity, I think we do have time to research some of the things that Councilman Reynolds have stated, and those are some of my concerns as well, um, but I believe that today we're not voting on implementing that ordinance, we're just voting to give us the opportunity if that time comes, so we won't have to go through that process, but I believe that we can research and get some more information, cause still that don't mean that if a person voted on a day, they're gonna vote to pass that ordinance.
Mr. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we're not determining how the program will be implemented should the legislature grant us this authority, that's not what we're doing today, all we're asking is the Alabama, is the, ask the Mobile County Legislative Delegation to bring such a matter forward in the legislature, now I would like to point out that the Alabama Supreme Court the other day upheld a similar, or, a similar, uh, arrangement that's been put in place in the city of Montgomery, justices ruled six, one, in, uh, in favor of the city and against a motorist who had brought many of the challenges that, that, that Councilman Williams, uh, mentions, uh, i- in, in, in what he said, so I, I don't think there's any doubt whatsoever that such an arrangement is, uh, legal under the law, uh, the Alabama Supreme Court has said it's legal under the law, and again, all we're doing is asking the legislative delegation to take this to the legislature for us and get it passed, if it's passed, then we come back and determine how and if it will be implemented.
I guess it'll, it seems like it's gonna shake out about like the Supreme Court did with one dissenting vote.
Yeah, I would like to say too, that I did sign up as a sponsor, but I truly, uh, do agree what Mr. Reynolds said, we have spent millions of dollars on traffic lights with the signals and everything, but at the same time, Casey Callaway can testify, we have spent millions of dollars on Keep Mobile Beautiful, and people still just throwing trash out there, and they can keep throwing trash out there until they get caught, if they know that nobody's not watching them, they gonna keep throwing trash out there, same thing as far as the traffic, I mean, people know that if there's no officer on this particular street, or there's no sense of officer, uh, history of officers being on this particular street, people gonna continue to run the red lights, I mean, it's up and down all the time on Broad Street, meaning people just speeding, I mean, it's up, all the time on Marine Street, people just speeding, Baltimore Street, people just speeding, if nobody's out there to watch them or catch them, you know, they gonna keep on speeding, they gonna keep on littering, they gonna keep on running traffic lights, you know, and the same thing as far as in talking about, you know, another agency governing our, our, uh, city, I mean, we always hire third parties, I mean, we hire third, third parties for trash pickup, when we got behind, we hire third party for grass cutting, I mean, this is nothing new we, we done, this is something really can help our city and keep our city safe versus what it is today.
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so a couple of things. A third party pick up trash, and a third party to administer the law, essentially take the job from a police officer, writing citations and putting it in the hands of private business whose sole goal is to dre- drive profit. I don't think that's what we wanna do, and I don't think that's even remotely the same of a, a, somebody picking up trash, or Keep Mobile Beautiful, I think it's, it's a, it's a whole lot different. Also, I don't think it's been fully considered amongst, uh, amongst here of the adverse effects of this beyond just the privacy and the rights concerns of our citizens, and it's also important to understand that with a little bit of reading, you'll find that this actually likely doesn't resolve the issue of accidents at intersection, that as you may reduce the number of people running red lights, you actually see an increase in the rear-end injuries, because people are scared to death that they're, they're gonna have to pay a two-hundred-dollar fine, cause they can't afford their groceries, that they're gonna slam on brakes and somebody's gonna rear end. Those are the adverse effects that we're voting on today, although we can try to frame it in some sort of way that we're not, uh, voting for it today, this is one step towards voting for it, I mean, this is going down that road, and I urge you all, as you want to urge the state legislation, I urge you all to stop it now before it becomes a problem that is out of control, look at the city of Houston, the city of Houston, they, they thought this was a great idea, well, then they had a voter referendum and they overturned it, pulled it out, now there's empirical data that can be looked at over the course of ten years of them having these cameras in place, of the effectiveness of it, they measured it during, now they've measured it after, I've got the report right here, and I think you'll find, if you spend the time to read it, you'll find that this is a road to nowhere, and I say let's don't start down this road today by taking a vote, that's all I really have to say.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
This is a technology that's been implemented in over four hundred United States cities, including nearly two-thirds of the fifty most populous cities. It is a technology that's been employed by, uh, successfully employed by cities in the state of Alabama, I say it's a technology that we ought to have the ability to use in the future if we so choose, thank you.
Mr. President. Ms. Carol.
Ben's right. That's all.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Look, you're not giving up your rights, period. Anybody that gets a ticket, whether it be from a camera or a police officer, still has to go to court, and they get to prove their case and be found guilty or innocent of the charges in front of a judge, that does not change, so saying you're giving up your rights is actually false. I'm sick and tired of watching folks every day in the city run red light blatantly, I watch it every day. I've seen wreck after wreck, I've seen life altered after life altered, and I'd much rather have a rear ender than somebody like a semi-truck running through a, a red light and hitting a sedan, the impacts are far greater, we lost a hundred and, what, a hundred and six police officers this year in attrition, we're short, we can't monitor the intersections like we need to, this is a tool that we need in our toolkit to stop folks from blatantly disobeying the law.
Mr. President.
Ms. Reynolds.
Said I was done, but one last comment, because, uh, Councilman from, uh, District Six raises, raises a, a question that comes up, you're not giving up your rights, when a police officer goes out and writes you a ticket, yes, you're right, that's a criminal citation, you go to, you go to court and you, you enjoy the preservation of the Sixth Amendment, where you have the right to face your accuser, well, not in this scenario that we're talking about here today, you forego that right, this is a, this is a civil penalty here that's imposed, so if a, if an officer writes me a ticket, you're right, I got to go in front of the judge and face that civil penalty, but in this case, we're saying, for the same citation administered by a private business, you now can go to court and never face your accuser. you now can go to court and never face your accuser.
And other council members?
Just one second. The private business part kind of has me torn. It leads me to think that if it's a questionable push that the private business would go for the fine as a profit margin as opposed to the truth of the matter, that makes me wonder whether or not a private practice or business should be doing it. I'm not in disagreement that we could give or ask the legislature to give us the opportunity to do it. But I don't know how far we'd actually go past that right now.
And other council members?
Madam Clerk?
Sixty-one, four-nine, authorized release of claims and settlement agreement. Ordinance is being introduced. Zero-two, zero-zero-seven, ordinance to provide for the reapportionment of seven council districts in the city of Mobile.
I would like to ask our attorney, could he just explain to the council and to the public exactly where we at with this, what's before the council today? And the next steps?
Well, we've got the district meetings y'all are supposed to have. And if, after all those are held, whenever they may be held, you can bring this up for a vote if you so choose. If you don't bring it up for a vote, or you vote it down, unless something different is approved and in place in six months from last Thursday, I believe, whatever date that is, sometime in August, then this would be enacted.
Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I would like to state that, you know, when this first was brought out, I was asked to sponsor it because where did the law? I read it, that requires a sponsor. And after having my meeting last week, two other council members came up to sponsor this ordinance also. And I read a bad doubt because I have several constituents that still have some concerns with the process of how this was drawn out to be. Several people have asked for, you know, several studies to take place, such as polarization, racial polarization study, to even from, you know, another third party, you know, to look into this particular ordinance. You know, it was stated on last week that it was a third party looking, had looked at this. But to me, the third party that was mentioning is almost, pretty much an employee of the city and pretty much is the same person that draw the lines just about 12 years ago, where some of the people that I represent still have questions about what happened, you know, back in 2010. I would like to ask this council, even though it's in our hands now, the mayor had turned this over to us. And this is something that has to be done by law, you know, regardless, you know? But I would like to ask this council, you know, about seeing about, you know, looking as far as in having a third, you know, party consultant company to look at this, to do a face, I mean, to do pretty much a study on this, probably like a third party, someone don't have a dog in a fight. There are many mills that's out there, you know, of why the lines was drawn. I cannot speak for nobody except for CJ Small. But if I believe that we have a third party to look at this particular, the drawings of redistricting, you know, that may bring some ease to the people that I represent, and I speak of no other district. I'm just speaking of the ones that I'm, you know, have spoke of, which is District Three, and the ones that came down here publicly to our meeting. And I would like to confirm with our attorney, would I be out of order if I bring a motion to the floor and say that, you know, about this council to hire, you know, a third party to, you know, look at, you know, redrawing the lines? And I do appreciate the administration, all they work and all they've done, you know, with, you know, redistricting, the maps, drawing out the lines for the maps and everything. And also, I do appreciate them too for willing to step up to assist, you know, a third party if the will of the council says so. So would I be out of line to make a motion like that during this particular meeting or what?
I mean, you know, that's what y'all do, you know? Make motions, approve contracts. And if the person were an attorney, you can hire attorneys. I think you can do that if you got, if there's votes there to do it.
So to bring out the conversation as such made dean, I would like to make a motion, you know, for this council with the system, with the administration, to hire a third party to look at the redistricting lines for the city of Mobile for the, from the 2020 census.
Mr. President.
I think I just put a motion, that'd be seconded being the discussion.
Second.
We can't do that at the pre-meeting, this meeting.
Okay, that's why I would just ask. Okay, okay.
Mr. President?
Hold up one second, Mr. Penn. It was Mr. Reynolds and then Mr. Penn. But let's get this clarification first, so at the meeting time, we are able to do this correct. Only, okay, that was my question earlier. Just add something to the agenda. Well, if you could draw something simple, if I can just get this added onto the agenda, I would appreciate it. It would be Mr. Reynolds and then Mr. Penn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. At the risk of repeating myself in the meeting, I'm going to make some comments now and likely say them again in the meeting for all the public to see. The plan that was put before me last Thursday, I reviewed. I worked with the administration to see what they had in mind for the future of our city. And all in all, based on our community meeting and feedback that I've gotten, it was a good plan for District Four. They worked with each one of us to try to formulate a plan that would be amicable to everyone. And I've reserved my comments on all this until it got before us, and it's before us today. They modified the plans based on the feedback. And they put forward what I think, and based on what the lawyers tell me, is a legal plan, one that will withstand any court challenge. And I think it's a good plan. But the plan, in my opinion, is incomplete in that it does not account for annexation in the western parts, southern parts of our city. And we know full well that we will be seeing an annexation plan on our agenda here very soon. And we have taken legislative control of redistricting. No longer lies only with the executive branch. Now, we can, you know, draw these lines however we see fit. I think that's a good thing for us all, so that we can all have our constituents' wills, wishes all accounted for. But I think any vote for this plan that does not account for annexation is really a premature vote. Our vote should, we've got six months now to work this all out. Instead of subjecting everyone in this city to this process that we just went through all over again, we now have the opportunity to get an annexation done and redraw these lines of the city once and for all. We don't have to do it twice. So for that reason, any vote pertaining to this redistricting plan, I will not be a party to. I am, I'm going to abstain from any of these votes on hiring a consultant. Although hiring a consultant may be what we need to do. But it makes no sense to hire a consultant to address this plan and then do annexation, and then what? Hire another consultant to redraw the lines again. I say, let's get on with it now. Let's just get it all done. Hire one consultant, hire no consultants. But I cannot vote until I see annexation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that, I agree with you. One of the things that I mentioned that I would like to see a study done, this is going to be the guidelines for the next 10 years. We can't focus on annexation. We need to focus on redistricting at this moment. That's the first thing that we're focused on. And I think we need to look at it, and because it's important. We know that the next 10 years could be, a lot of things could change. And I think if we get this right, it kind of moves forward in every area of this next, with three years and nine months we have left in this seat. I believe if we do this right, it set the standards. I commend the administration. I think they worked hard talking to every person. And I know that's a challenge, dealing with seven different personalities as well as going out in the community. I commend that. And I don't think it's a shock to the administration to ask for a third party to just make sure that everything is transparent. And so I agree with President Small.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just want to be very clear. A racial polarization study and the hiring of a third-party consultant are two separate and distinct functions. A racial polarization study, all it does is tell you how many people of one demographic voted for their demographic in an election. Consultant to lay out redistricting lines is completely different. I think we need to be very clear on how we approach that and what we're asking for. Thank you.
And other council members?
Mr. President, we all know where I stand on this. I'm beside you 100% with the racial polarization study and also the third-party consultant. I agree that we can't move forward with anything else until those are done.
And other council members?
Not. Madam Clerk?
Sixty-four, zero-zero-eight and zero-zero-nine are rezoning properties at 1452 Government Street and 4251 Bitten Spur Road. Consent resolutions being introduced. Thirty-seven, one-fifty-two, one-fifty-three, and one-fifty-four are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special retail license to Box Out on Dolphin Street. For approval of issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to West Food Bar on St. Michael's Street. For issuance of a retail beer table wine on-off premises license to Piggly Wiggly on Moffett Road. Forty, one-five-five, one-five-six, one-five-seven, one-five-eight are declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Sixty, one-five-nine, and one-sixty are determining appropriations to Providence Foundation Festival of Flowers and Murphy High School serve a public purpose and approving payment. Resolutions being introduced. Zero-one, one-sixty-one, authorized agreement with Aldat for maintenance of passive warning devices for Main Street.
Mr. President. Yeah, on this, this one, one-sixty-one. That is for railroad crossings? So it's ordinary for, at rail crossings, for the city of Mobile to have that maintenance? Okay. And this contract, as I read it, is only for those?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, anything with this, I'm absolutely in favor of. It was about a month ago, I believe, I sent Chief Batiste an email. That intersection at near I-65 and Spring Hill was completely out. The trains were having to stop to have somebody direct traffic or stop traffic before the trains crossed that. Matter of fact, I think there was a minor incident there just about a month ago. So this is absolutely needed for the safety of our constituents.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
I totally agree. We, I got some information, and I talked to Councilman Jones as well. He shared some things, and we was able to get that fixed. But we need this. It's vital. Both are located in District One. And so we truly need to upgrade. It caused issues with the cars traveling. We get so many calls about that. And so I'm glad we were able to get started and get this accomplished.
And other council members?
Madam Clerk?
Zero-one, one-sixty-two, authorized agreement with Aldat for maintenance of passive warning devices for Spring Hill Avenue. Zero-eight, one-sixty-three, approved purchase order to Gray Shift for annual renewal of forensic science software license, forty-five thousand, nine-hundred ninety-five dollars. Zero-eight, one-sixty-four, approved purchase order to Thompson Tractor for scissor lift. Author Outlaw Convention Center, twenty-three thousand, three-hundred twelve dollars and thirty cents.
Wait a second. Why are we purchasing a city against civil? Why are we purchasing, why are we using it? So, I mean, wouldn't it, how often are we using it? Often enough to purchase it? I see everybody shaking their head. I mean, the lease on it's what, thirty-five hundred dollars a week?
Twenty-one, one-sixty-five, authorized contract with Lexus Nexus for digital research subscription. Twenty-three, one-sixty-six, accept these for right-of-way for the McGregor Avenue widening project, Apple Boulevard to Dolphin Street. Twenty-five, one-sixty-seven, grant easement to Alabama Power Company for rerouting three-phase route to Morgan Avenue and Creek Street. Thirty-seven, one-sixty-eight, consider approval of a significant public convenience and necessity to Ruby Smith doing business to street transportation to operate a shuttle service. Forty-seven, one-sixty-nine, assent to the vacation of portions of Pearl Street, Lion Street, Hospital Street, and Basil Street. Sixty-one, one-seventy, authorize the city of Mobile to join the state of Alabama as participants in the Indo settlement. Call for public hearings. Forty-one, one-seven-one, call for public hearing to vacate a portion of public streets and right-of-way situated at the southwest corner of the intersection of Congress Street and North Cedar Street. Scheduled March twenty-second. Forty-one, one-seven-two, call for public hearing to rezone property located at 4230 Halls Mill Road from B-3 to I-1, scheduled March fifteenth. Announcements?
Could we go back to?
Oh, go ahead.
Could we go back to CIS one-dash-one-seven-oh? As a city attorney, could you explain to us in details exactly, you know, what we're looking at here?
So I can give you a brief explanation, but if you want more detail, I'd be glad to take you in the executive session. So that is the opioid settlement. And the Attorney General has gone forward with the claim for the state. But we had our, as a city, had our own individual claim. And so that's, we are going into the process of making sure we're settling with the Indo entity and closing it all out.
And I also like to ask our attorney, if the, what I asked you to put the resolution of, I want to go ahead and sponsor that, if I can get two people to add it. Agreed to add that to the agenda for this meeting? I'll be one. I agree.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, on forty-one, one-seventy-two is a call for public hearing. It's going to be, I guess, are we having that public hearing today? Today's the fifteenth. So I would imagine we're having that public hearing earlier on. I just, there may be some folks that show up to speak on this one. I met with the neighbors yesterday along with the developer. And I think we've reached an agreement amongst ourselves. And I think we've reached a, uh, an agreement amongst ourselves. And then, um, of course, uh, a council member from District Six is going to be on a planning commission meeting and address this issue there as well. Um, so I just want to make everyone aware, there may be some folks that show up to speak on behalf of the, the neighbors.
That's 172, right?
Correct. B3 to I1 in an industrial area that abuts industrial, uh, McKinnon Industrial Parkway.
Yeah, it's March 15th.
Sorry.
You're good.
Anybody, any other council members? Anything from the administration? Okay, did not? Let's see, July 230.